So, in about thirty seconds Keith you can uh call this committee to order and open the floor for nominations. We're just opening up the bylaws too, very slowly.
Does Keith do it, or?
I'll ask Todd to do it, he's the chairman.
Okay, great, perfect.
Okay, he's gonna do it, he's gonna open up the nominating committee meeting.
Okay, I'll call the roll one. Okay, I actually have six now. So whenever you're ready, Mr. Fagan.
Okay, let's uh get started for the planning commission nominating uh committee meeting started. Do we need to take a roll call?
Sure, I'll take the roll. Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Ms. Hancock? Sandy, it looks like you're muted.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Hart? Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, uh, we have met with the uh, the committee nominate committee, we've talked, discussed uh phone and online. And our recommendation for this year is for uh Keith Taylor to be the chair. The vice chair would be Luke Cunningham and Gary Elliott for the secretary. Are there any questions or concerns about any of those or comments from anyone else on the nominating committee?
Is that a motion, Todd?
Uh, yeah, I guess that would be a motion. That's our recommendation motion for uh this year's slate.
I would second it.
And do we need to call a vote for that?
Discussion, yeah.
Yeah, discussion. No discussion, uh, a vote. Uh, Paula?
Yes.
Okay, and Sandy?
Yes.
Todd Fagan?
Yep.
Uh, any nays? So if that's there, that would be our recommendation and our slate for uh the chair, vice chair, secretary position for twenty fifteen.
All right, that's great. So then that'll be for the you, the whole commission will then uh address it at your, when you gavel out of this. Um, so if you have no more business, you all can now do a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There we go. So we, do we uh stay on and go to the next, or come back?
I'm sorry, who, did someone second the motion and then vote on the adjournment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, motion to adjourn?
I think Sandy moved.
Seconded. Should we just have to vote?
And then all three of you would vote, yes.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Okay, and then, yeah, the four of you can just stay on while we wait for the other um members. And then we can um start that. And we'll just leave the recording as well, that way we'll just have the one recording.
What time is that meeting supposed to start now?
We advertise them both for six, just because the nominating committee uh is so short. So if we just wanna wait until about six-ten?
Sounds good.
To give the other members a little time.
Thank you.
Mel, and Jacob, this is Keith.
Yes.
If periodically I mute, it's because I've got this off real bad and I might do that, so people don't have to hear it.
True. Are you in St. Louis, or are you uh down south, Keith?
I'm down south and uh Carol, yeah, luckily we're not in there, but but my wi- wife Carol, she's, I've gotta put her on a plane Thursday, she has to attend a funeral. But she's gotta fly home Thursday.
Yeah.
And I hope it's not too bad.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know if it's supposed to snow again, or what?
I hope not, because the funeral's Friday.
Yeah, I just don't check anymore, I just look outside.
How much snow did you have at at your house, Mel?
Oh, I feel like it is probably like ten inches or something, that's been blowing around, but.
My oldest, my oldest son lives down in the city, he's, he thought he had a foot, but I'm like, I don't know.
Jacob, what do you, you shoveled, what did you, what did you experience?
Oh my gosh, I've been shoveling on and off all day today, and I-
I had to stop, I couldn't go very long.
I am, while I, while I'm okay right this second, uh, I had to take a little bit of a physical break earlier. And I, I am one hundred percent certain that I am going to be exceptionally sore tomorrow. I don't know, probably eight to ten inches here in University City, just, just uh, you know, within walking distance of the county office. Um, yeah, it's uh, it's probably the biggest snowstorm I think since I've moved to St. Louis, and I moved here about ten years ago. Or if it's not the biggest, it's pretty close.
Mm-hmm.
Did uh, did you have, how much ice did you have underneath on the, on your drive?
I don't know, maybe like a quarter of an inch, but thankfully, like when I was shoveling today, it was, it would come up pretty easily. So I was able to sort of get underneath of it all and, and sort of, and, and sort of shove it aside, it wasn't all stuck to the um, to the concrete. So I was able to get it pretty down, it's, it's down to concrete, all the way down the steps, down to the sidewalk. Then I spent my, and then I, you know, I parked my car on the road, um, so I spent about an hour just before this meeting um clearing out my spot uh out on, out on the roadway. The plow truck had cleared about one lane's worth, I mean, it's a pretty narrow residential streets and old neighborhood. Um, and um, so it'll be easy to drive and the, and the, once I got the car, but um, I completely, completely uh shoveled out a spot that I can back into and get out of tomorrow. So, um, but it was really, it was really hard work.
Was it, was it a what, heavy snow?
Uh, it was because there was so much sleet, um-
It's heavy.
Yeah, I feel like the first bout, I could like hear it hitting the roof and stuff.
You know, in the bathroom in my house, there's a uh skylight, so you could just hear it, um, you know, pelting the, the skylight all day yesterday. And then there was a, there was a lull for several hours, I think in the afternoon-ish, and then in the evening, it, it was all snow again. So, um, yeah, it was, and it was deceptive too, because um, looking out the window, it doesn't look like a lot. And then, but then when you go out and you start shoveling it, it's, it's a lot. Um, the stairs, like the stairs off the back porch here were all just, you know, completely, completely covered and just looked like a, kind of like a slope. So I've had to, had to do a lot of digging out of stairs and stuff, so. A rough day.
Do you have, you have snow come off your roof right where the stairs are at, right there in the back?
Hmm, no, nothing's come off, nothing now that, but the house does have a pretty, uh, the slant on the roof is pretty, so I mean, snow could sort of fall off, but it's just kind of the blowing of it all, there was a lot of wind too.
Sorry I missed it.
It was pretty to watch. But it'll now be gross from henceforth.
It's a well.
So.
Well, it doesn't sound like it's gonna warm up too soon.
No, not till Friday, and that, and by warm, I mean that's warm up, it's relative, I think it's supposed to hit thirty-two on Friday. So Mel, it is about six-ten, how many commissioners do we have, do we have signed on?
Uh, I did see Ms. Williams sign-ons, we have a quorum, if we can definitely, if it started at six-ten.
Okay.
Abby? You, you uh notified everybody, who is not going to be on the meeting?
Everyone is going to be here today.
Okay.
Should we go ahead and maybe text the people who aren't here and verify that they're coming?
That would be good.
Yeah, I can do that.
Well, we got her shovel in the driveway.
Haven't been outside in two days, alls I'm doing is cooking.
Oh.
Made spaghetti sauce, chili, bean soup, pot roast, chocolate chip cookies.
You're, you're, you're set for a while, aren't you?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, when can we come over and get some of that? Holy cow.
Come on over, come on over.
Wait for someone?
I think we got a couple people that are, three people that are missing.
Chris is gonna hop on now.
Lou said he's logging in now.
Mr. Elliott's trying to hop on right now, too.
I'm, I'm working on a, with a hotspot down here, so I hope it stays connected.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, I think we're just waiting for Mr. Elliott now. Is that right?
Okay, uh, can we go ahead and get started, I guess? Gary must be having some problems. All right. We'd like to uh open this January sixth executive board meeting. If I had a gavel, I'd gavel in, but I don't, so if we could uh call roll, please.
Mr. Cunningham? Mr. Elliott, Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Ms. Hart? Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Uh, we have any meeting summaries?
Yes, we have the December executive meeting and public hearing.
The minutes? Okay, so everybody had a chance to look those over and read them? Uh, do we have any discussion, do we have any corrections? On those minutes? If not, can I have a, a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'm open.
There is a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Eyes have it. Uh, now we have the uh St. Louis County Commission Status Sheet from August fifth through December twenty-four. And has everybody had a chance to take a look at that? At the summaries? And the status sheets? Everybody had a chance to take a look at those? There any questions or concerns? Can I get a, a motion for approval?
So move.
Has there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a first and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Nays? Eyes have it. Now we're moving on to uh committee reports, nominating committee. Uh, with the chair, Todd Fagan, please uh give us a report, please.
Yes, thank you Keith. Uh, the nominate committee, committee of myself, Paula Hart, Sandy Hancock, uh, we have proposed a slate of Keith Taylor as chair, Luke Cunningham as co-chair, Gary Elliott as secretary. Brought that in a meeting before this executive meeting and went ahead and voted upon that, and it was unanimous three-zero. But that is a recommendation for the uh, the eldest position for twenty twenty-five.
All heard the recommendation of the nominating committee? Uh, is there any questions, concerns? If not, could I get a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it, and our new uh commission officers would be myself, uh, chair, Luke Cunningham as vice chair, and Gary Elliott as secretary for the year twenty twenty-five. Thank you very much, committee, and your support, and we look, uh, to have a, a very good year this year. Uh, no committee on a whole report? And we're gonna go right to new staff introductions, are we going to do that now, or you wanna do, do that later?
We will postpone those, since we did not have our new staff members physically in the office today, the county was closed today. So, um, but just for a sneak peek, tomorrow will be uh Bennett Anderson's first day, he will be our new planning technician. He will be serving in the role that was formerly held by Evelyn Bush and a lot of the duties done by Debbie Nesbit, who the planning commission probably just wasn't as familiar with. We will also have our new office supervisor starting, Marilyn Beck. Um, she formerly, formerly was the legislative assistant to Councilwoman Kelly Dunaway, who just finished up a term on the council. I just wanna note that I see Mr. Elliott has joined the meeting. Um, in addition, we are having an uh, a section that was formerly in Public Works, the Office of Zoning Enforcement is going to move into the Department of Planning, is moving into the Department of Planning right now. Um, so those staff members, Amber Mahelchik and Joan Holtzman will also introduce themselves, or we'll have introductions for them um when we do present that to the commission, so something to look forward to.
What's the person's name that is, that, that used to work for Kelly Dunaway?
Her name is Marilyn Beck.
And she'll be the, the manager?
She'll be the office supervisor, so the role formerly held by Anita Johnson, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Are, are basically our sole administrative um position in the department. Our superhero.
All the staff are superheroes.
That's true, another superhero in the-
That's right, we'll have another superhero.
Yeah. So we're really excited.
Is there any more person excited more than Abby?
I think Abby will be most excited when we get a new land use manager, which will be occurring in twenty twenty-five, that's when I think she'll be the happiest.
Yes, but Bennett will be calling you for, for public hearing this week, so that'll be exciting.
So is um Joan Holtzman coming in full-time or part-time?
Joan is um technically, she is a retiree, so she's intermittent, um, so she's, she basically does half-time.
Okay, so I do know Joan from the nineties, yeah, being a, uh, she was zoning, yeah, on the sixth floor, so.
Is a, I think, the longest-serving county employee of all time, I, I'm-
I don't know if it's of all time, she's gotta be in the top ten.
The lore is that she, I mean, like, she's still so young, but the lore is that she started when she was seventeen.
Oh, seven, I was gonna say eighteen, but yeah.
So she's a legend.
Yes, she is.
She's wonderful.
Yes, she is, so we're very, we're very excited for Amber and Joan uh to be coming in, so.
So yes, I anticipate um, maybe not next week, but probably the February meeting, we will do those introductions.
Sounds good, sounds good. Um, Gary, you just joined us, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna let you know that you have been nominated and voted to uh retain your position as secretary.
Okay, thank you all.
Uh, with that, uh, let's go to our new business.
All right, good evening commissioners. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, we have the PC thirty-six dash twenty-four, Jessica Pfeifer.
Uh, good evening commissioners, this is PC thirty-six dash twenty-four, Jessica Pfeifer. Uh, this is a request for a change in zoning from C-eight plan commercial district to R-three residence district to reutilize the existing single-family residence on the site. Uh, this is a two-point-nine-nine acre tract on the northeast corner of Dunn Road, west of Jerry's Lane, and this is coming to you as a letter of recommendation. So this site is in North County, and on the aerial is bounded in red. Um, on this larger aerial, you can see similar single-family homes all down Jerry's Lane. Um, and to the east is undeveloped land in association with Village North Retirement. So for the purposes of review, PC thirty-six dash twenty-four Jessica Pfeifer is a request for changing zoning from C-eight plan commercial district to R-three residence district to utilize the existing single-family home. The site was zoned C-eight plan commercial district in nineteen ninety-four in association with proposed medical offices, but this use has never developed. And this single-family home has existed on the property and has been vacant since before that petition. So, the department is recommending approval of this request.
You've heard the department's recommendation of approval, do we have a motion for that?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Now we have a second.
A motion.
Do we have any questions or concerns on this, uh, recommendation? Well, if not, those, uh, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. And next we have PC 37 dash 24 Joe Badino.
Good evening Commissioners, PC 37 dash 24 Joe Badino is a request for a change in zoning from R2 to R3 Residence District for the purpose of single-family residences on a tract size of 4.43 acres located in the south side of Old Baumgartner Road at Meadburn Road. And this is coming to you tonight as letter of recommendation. From the county context map, subject site located in South County and to the right of the screen is subject site outlined in red. And this is larger aerial sites, um, some most of the surrounding sites have been zoned out too, but give all other go into process of changing zoning and they have been zoned out to residential streets, developed single-family residences via PEU. The petitioners are requesting a change in zoning from R2 to R2, to R2 Residence District to subdivide the tract into nine lots to develop single-family homes. Um, four out of these nine, four out of nine houses will have access via the existing cop courts on Old Baumgartner Road. While the other five will have access via a proposed extension of the stop streets, which is the pin oak terrace courts to form a pool of the sack. The existing single-family home will remain on the site. The department is recommending approval because the sites and motor surrounding areas were zoned out to residential district 1965. And a significant amount of land have been subject to changes in zoning to R3 Residence Districts to allow development of higher densities, single-family residential subdivisions via the PEU procedure. And, um, the R2 Residence District zoning is appropriate at the location and consistent with good planning practice. The proposed residential development is stable at the site. The traffic that will be generated by the four houses using the access on Old Baumgartner Road could be safely handled on the section of the road between Meadburn and Old Baumgartner Road. Um, as long as development forms, confirms to the county's standard.
Oh Keith, I think.
Yeah, I'm for, uh, ask, request for motion, so.
Keith, I see you're unmuted, but I don't hear you. No. Um, Mr. Cunningham, do you think you could call for a motion while Mr. Taylor's? Working on his.
Here we go. You. Are you there? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so, so there was a recommend, recommendation for approval. Do we have a motion?
I'm moved.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions or concerns?
I mean, uh, this is Sandy, I have a question. So did, did we say that there is homes there now that are gonna remain? Or are the homes there now gonna be torn down?
There's one single, existing single-family on the site and they said at the public hearing that it's gonna remain on the site.
But it's that, wait, well, just Lot One. But there's barn there that will be torn down, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Got it. I remember this. Okay, thank you.
I, I do have a question. And I can, I'm not seeing that on here. Will they be putting a sidewalk all the way around this site?
Um, yes, it's part of the, um, recommendation from the Department of Transportation and Planning if at all they develop it to be single-family homes.
Okay.
So during the plating process, because this does not have a PEU ordinance that's going along with this, this would be a straight zoning subdivision. But other, but other policies of the county will require that a sidewalk is, as a part of this development through the plating and development process.
Very, very good. Thanks, Jacob. Uh, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Ayes, ayes have it. Motion approved. Next.
PC 36 dash 24 GCI Crown Imperial LLC is a request for amended developments in the M3 and FPM3 industrial district for the purpose of battery energy storage system on a tract size of 10 acres located in the south side of Baumgartner Road, west of Baumgartner Industrial Drive. From the county context map, subject site located in the South County and to the right of the screen is a subject site outlined in red. And this is the larger area. The subject site is surrounded by industrial development. The commissioners are requesting amended developments in the M3 Plant Industrial District and FP, and FC M3 Plant Industrial, floodplain plant industrial district to permit a battery energy storage system. The battery energy storage system will be connected to the Ameren Substation to the nuts of the site across Baumgartner Road. And the personnel stated that projects would be installed using modern technologies to promote safety and reliability. If, the previous development plan presented at the public hearing, it shows the battery storage system surrounded by 24 foot wide dustproof access road and it is bordered by drainage swill. Um, it also shows that there's gonna be two, two cop courts from along Baumgartner Road and no sign of fences, no landscaping were proposed on the sides. The department is recommending approval because the M3 Plan Industrial District procedure is appropriate for the development of the site that has been owned to an industrial use. The development conditions inherited the M3 Plan Industrial District to ensure the proposed development is compatible surrounding uses and ensure reasonable improvement to the site. The proposed use of the tracks are reasonable and appropriate at the site and surrounding permitted developments. Some of the, some of the reasons that we'd like to see on site development plan is, the department is recommending once, one access, one access to the site via, um, along Baumgartner Road. All itana drive shall be paved. A 20 foot wide buffer yard is required in the eastern and western setback planted as required by the zoning ordinance. If 15 foot buffer yard is required along the Baumgartner Road planted as required by the zoning ordinance, screening shall be provided at the eastern limits of the M3 and all proposed fences shall be decorative. No barbed wire is permitted. All asphalt and gravel on the site shall be removed and unused portions of the sites shall be returned to its natural states. And at this time, I request for a motion.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation of the, uh, department. Do we have a motion for approval?
A motion for approval.
Is there a second? That being said, do we have any questions or concerns about this, uh, PC?
Is, is Ameren feeding the battery station here or is the station feeding to Ameren?
I'm, I'm ready to go into. Thank you.
My understanding is that it's a backup for the traditional substation that's on the north side of the street.
Okay.
So I don't know how the batteries get loaded up necessarily, but I think the intention is for them to be the backup for the traditional station on the north side.
So my understanding is, is that those batteries are, are tied into the electric system, um, which then keeps them charged. And then at any time during a, um, power outage or, or, or low power in that vicinity, that battery storage system can then be used to, uh, provide power for up to, I think it was up to four hours for 10,000 homes. Um, that, that power equivalent would be stored at this site.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Ayes, ayes have it. And on to, we don't have any old business. We're, or do we have anything with the, uh, PC 28 dash 24? No, we don't. Site plan. It's very good.
We do expect to bring that one back to the Planning Commission next week. I know it's been not ready for action for a little bit, but there's been a little bit of progress.
Flower and thunder. Are they coming back next week or are they gonna be?
Uh, those go together. Uh, so they'd be together, yeah.
All right. They're still working on that, I remember. Okay. Uh, site plan. PC 95 dash 05.
Good evening, PC 95 dash O5 SSM Healthcare St. Louis is a C8 Plan Commercial District governing a 54.10 acre tract on the northwest corner of Bowles Avenue and Highway 141. This is site development plan for approval this evening. This site is in the southern portion of West County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. The plan shows a new 20 by 20 regulator building, um, to be used by Spire Energy. The building is accessed via a new internal access easement. It's located at the southeastern corner of the site near the intersection of 141 and Bowles. So north is to the left on this plan. The Commission will recall recommending approval of an ordinance amendment, um, to allow the building in this location. And this is an architectural rendering of the building. And the department is recommending approval.
Heard the, uh, department's recommendation of approval. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
There's a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or concerns? If not, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it and it, that is approved. Go to the order.
So the only thing I think that we had on here was a, uh, a brief update on where we are for the comprehensive plan. Is that correct, Mel?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. So, um, the town, we had our, uh, open houses back in December, um, or was it November?
November.
November, right. Time flies, holidays fly.
November.
That's right. Um, back in, in November. Um, and we've also had online, we've, we've had the open houses available online for the last couple of weeks and the online, uh, portion remains open for an additional week, uh, soliciting, um, views and perspectives from residents online. So when that, that will close and we are working to create a report of the findings from the open houses. And, uh, as we move forward, moving from draft recommendations to putting together the draft plan with AE Comp. So when we get a little bit closer to some timelines on that, we will come back to this commission and let you all know and, and make sure that we have, um, also plenty of time for you all to review it. In fact, I was chatting with Paul Weatherford today about, um, when the Comprehensive Planning Committee meets later this month, one of the things it is, we're getting close to is that committee, um, telling us how it would like and how much time it would like, um, to have the draft plan, um, with the, with the commission before we make the ultimate recommendation to the council. So we are, um, moving along and continue to, uh, have a goal of, um, a recommendation for the comprehensive plan coming out of the commission sometime in late spring. So that, uh, in early summer, early to midsummer, the council can hopefully, uh, pass an ordinance adopting that plan.
I have a question. So, uh, Jacob, do you know if anybody has been responding online?
Yes, um, I think we've got close to, uh, 50 responses from our online. Is that, I think that's about right. We're, we're, um, up to our online.
It's like mid 30s.
Oh, okay. So we've got about 30 something, 30 something responses to the online.
But we're still, um, we're gonna do another, like, a LinkedIn push. So, or, but I know that you're a LinkedIn pro, so that would be a good thing for you to, uh, repost.
And I know the county, uh, the County Executive's Office put out a press release about it. I think it was two weeks, it was like two weeks ago, they put out a press release about it. Um, so we've had that up now for a couple of weeks. And coupled with the really strong in-person, uh, engagement that we received, we've gotten a lot of really great feedback.
I mean, let me ask you this. Uh, and this may sound like a really odd question. Does St. Louis County employees know about this comp plan? Cause I'm gonna say some people I know don't.
Well, I would hope.
Employees in your building with you.
Sure, I would hope so. Um, we do have, um, at, on multiple screens inside of the building. Uh, there have been, there are almost on a daily basis. I know there, that kind of rolls through on, on various information screens that all county staff have access to. Um, additionally, department heads, I, I do keep department, uh, directors, um, constantly informed, um, of where we are. Um, so I would, I would definitely hope that it has been slowly over time trickling through, uh, to, to our workforce as well.
I don't know. You may need to get with the department directors again to push that down to their employees because some people don't know.
No, understood. I appreciate, I appreciate that feedback.
Be a good medium to share with county employees too, right now. So I've noted that.
Maybe we can, well, Mel, let, we can, um, talk about it tomorrow at the office as to whether we can do a, a, a push for perhaps a county staff push on this.
Uh, Jacob, I got a, just a, a question on, on this and it's only because of what's just happened in the last, uh, week. And it's kind of regards when all we're seeing on is public safety, what had happened down in New Orleans. And, and through our comprehensive plan, how much did we ever talk about public safety?
So during the.
Even a big part? And, and I guess the other question is, how big an apartment does the county have for public safety?
Well, that's a, it's a really, that's a really big question. So, I mean, when you look at the county's budget, our single largest really, um, line item is our public safety budget as expressed through, um, our funding of St. Louis County Police Department and other general, um, agencies that, that deal with public safety are the court system. Um, so we do, we do invest as a, as a government, a fair amount into public safety. When we did the, um, when we did the, the, some of our early outreach about asking people about existing conditions, about how they were feeling about public, about public safety. That was a question that we asked, um, throughout our survey and that we heard from residents, um, about how their, how their perceptions are of public safety, which, um, came out in some of our, and our, our survey results, we, you know, we found sort of a disparate sort of feeling on public safety, um, throughout St. Louis County. Um, I don't think anything is too particularly, um, surprising to hear that folks who live sort of out in West County and South County feel a little bit more about their public safety is secure. Whereas residents who are residing in North St. Louis County feel, uh, less secure about the public safety situation in the county. Um, and that was mirrored in our survey results. Um, so we are, this is a, um, a plan that looks to create a built environment that overall improves public safety, but it's not, it's not necessarily a plan in which, you know, the police department are going to take as sort of an actionable sort of, oh, this is how we manage large groups or how, this is how we, um, you know, do something of that nature. It's more about a long-range vision for how to, um, create a built environment that promotes public safety in, uh, big and small ways.
So, so I guess, I guess you answered my question. When it comes to public safety, there is no real public safety department?
Besides the police department by and large, that is, um, but no, the county does not have a public safety department. Um, we, we sort of, when we look at the budget, the way that we sort of just put things together when it comes to how we fund public safety is it's gonna be the police department, municipal courts. Um, I'd have to look at, I'd have to look at the budget, how else we, um, code sort of the monies that go towards public safety. Um, but a very, very, the, the largest proportion of county, of the county budget goes towards the funding of our public safety agencies.
Basically the county police is what you're saying.
A lot of it, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just was, just had a question about that. I don't know if every, every city and every county run about the same way or, or not. Or, or these other municipalities have a public safety actual department?
That's an interesting question and I can't speak for all, for all local governments. Um, a lot of bigger cities, um, do have an overarching sort of like public safety director that, that kind of helps oversee the, the, the whole sort of constellation of public safety, um, departments and sort of agencies. Um, but it's not universal. It's really just dependent and, and contextually, uh, dependent upon what, what area in the country and the community.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you. And anything else? We're gonna go to the, are there, anybody else have anything? Very good. Well, I'd like to move, uh, looking for a motion for adjournment of this, uh, executive board meeting.
Promote.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Nay? Nay? Ayes have it. And we will see everybody, uh, next week.
Next week in person with seven PM.
Person, seven PM.
Thanks, everyone.
Everybody.
Have a good one. Stay safe. Stay safe out there in the snowstorm. Bye now.